No, it's fine. Okay, good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, June 29th, 2022 City of West Point work session. I'd like to call this work session to order. And a few things before we start, we're expecting a few more council members here soon, and Councilman Finley is ill, but he is going to be with us on the live feed we stream on YouTube, so he should be with us on YouTube. And if you'll indulge me for just a minute, I want to recognize our city clerk, Mr. Richard McCoy, who received an award for City Clerk of the Year at the Georgia Municipal Association and Georgia Municipal Clerk Association Conference this past weekend. As you probably know, Mr. McCoy has made a measurable impact over the past 32 years with professionalism, loyalty, and drive. He has shown ongoing compassion, effective leadership, and dedication to serving the City of West Point. His hard work and diligence to provide the city with the preeminent services is commendable, and his ability to work with staff and support them helps to create sustainability and an exemplary team. I can personally attest to his loyalty, trust, and knowledge he provides day after day. So often, Mr. Richard McCoy puts the needs and interests of others before himself. This award is well deserved, and congratulations, Mr. McCoy. I get to work early, but I drive by, and his truck is already here, and the lights are already on in City Hall. That's it, he's a man, yes.
And he also takes great minutes.
Yeah. Yes, he does. Okay, to begin with, I'm going to review the agenda, and I'll need a motion to approve it in a second before we begin. Tonight's agenda is, we have public comment, and we have new business once we finish the public comment. We're going to discuss the 113 Springville Road project, we have a city manager update, we have a discussion about the meeting minutes, Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority member discussion, an intergovernmental agreement between the city and West Point Housing Authority for the West Point Villages project. And after that, we're going to enter an executive session to discuss some property. So those are the items on the agenda tonight, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. So tonight, we have public comment, and the mayor of City Council welcomes any public comment at this time. This portion of the meeting is for comments from citizens on any city issue, not for questions or debate. If you have questions, you will find contact information for all council members on the city website, or you may contact City Hall staff. Thank you for attending our council meeting. We don't normally have this many people, and we're glad to see you here. And I just want to reiterate, this is a listening session where we listen to you. It's not, we don't interact, we will listen to you, and of course, we know that many of you here on the Springville issue, Springville Road issue, but is there anybody here for public comment on any other issues?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's start with you. If you'll come up and state your name, and you have five minutes, anybody has five minutes to discuss any issue they like.
Yeah, I got it. Good evening, my name is Little Gaston Stone III. I have an issue. I want to put the sidewalks in the neighborhood for the little kids from Ninth Street to Martin Luther King Drive. They need to be sidewalked in that community, and I need the people to help out because they have little kids over there, you know, it need a sidewalk for the whole area in our community. And I got one more problem, sir, and ma'am. Somebody took my light meter off my house, and I filmed it, you know, my phone, it beeped me, and it shows that the person had took the light meter off the house. I didn't call to say the light meter was bad or anything. My whole house totally electric, I'm working on the house, but that light meter for the state on that house, it didn't look like it was cracked or broke or anything, but I got a picture of the guy who took the light meter off the house and the truck, you know, I'm just concerned about why they took the light meter off. And my light bill is $500 and something dollars, and I never dare hardly, I'd be there trying to look out to the house, but I'm up in the city trying to take care of my family, and I got a little 14-year-old daughter in Millersville, then I got my son and my grandkids up in Atlanta, and I'm having big problems with that. That issue of my light meter being off of my house, and then the sidewalk, and that's the problem. I ain't trying to bring no problem in this city, I like this city, you know, I like this town. Whatever I could do to help the people, we do need a sidewalk in the community for the kids to ride their bikes, whatever, jogging, you know, we don't want to get run over with a car or anything. We need that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it. Is there anybody else with any comments other than the Springville Road issue? Okay, given that there's so many people, we can't hear from everybody, obviously, so we'll get just a few, and I'd like to know, maybe a show of hands, well, I tell you what, let's just start. If there's anybody in favor of the project, if you'd raise your hand and maybe come up, and we'll take a couple. Anybody here? We're going to do that afterwards, we're just hearing public comment right now. The first item on the agenda will be the discussion with the city attorney about the Springville project. Okay, so I don't see anybody that wants to speak in favor of it, so take a couple of people.
You can do it.
Yes.
You can amend the agenda because it would inform people, if they got updated, they might not have so many redundant questions. What do you think? Could we have the update first before the public?
Before we go in?
Since we have so many people about this particular issue.
We've never done that before, and you want to...
But it would be so interesting to do it now.
Counsel, is that your desire, counsel, to do it that way?
I second Joe.
You second Joe? Okay, all right, well, then, we will, since you all are in one accord on the issue of the public comment, we will hold back public comment, and we will enter our first item on the agenda, which is new business of the 113 Springville Road, and I'll call on city attorney Alex Dixon to update us.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, councilman. I'll speak loud, I think I can speak loudly enough. Thank you, mayor, I will provide an update, and this project is at, the subject property is at 113 Springville Road. This project involves a building permit that was issued several months ago by the city. That permit was applied for through the city building office. At the time of that project, it was submitted as a two-story expansion to a home. This is in a residential, single-family zoning district within the city. It was submitted as a permit to, as an addition to that single-family home, a two-story addition. It's a large addition, but it was submitted as an addition to that home. The city officials discussed with the applicant the zoning restrictions, as well as the restrictions with respect to businesses in a residential zoning prior to that issue, prior to the permit being issued, the applicant. I was not there, but building officials, including the city manager and Mr. Dutton, that ultimately approved the permit, were confident that the applicant was satisfied, that he understood the restrictions on that property. After the permit was issued and construction began, there were numerous complaints by citizens about the size of the addition. City building officials investigated, it was clearly, it was already on its third floor, beginning phases, I think, well into the third floor of that addition. It was not approved for anything more than a two-story addition, so the construction was already well in advance of the terms of the permit. The city issued a stop-work order, performed some other investigation, undertook other investigation, went out to the site, took pictures. I met with Mr. Dutton and the city manager, asked for additional information from the property owner. He did provide some additional information, including providing plans for that three-story addition, which were very different than the original plans provided when the permit was issued. Based upon all of that investigation by the city, it was determined that this is clearly intended to be a boarding facility for multiple residential clients or customers, I'm not sure how you want to phrase that, but this would be well beyond a single-family residential home. There are numerous posts on social media about the plans for this project. The property owner obtained a business license, excuse me, the property owner did not obtain a business license. The property owner did incorporate a nonprofit business with the Secretary of State of the State of Georgia, I believe, earlier this year, prior to the permit being issued, in the name of Brotherhood Life Mission, Inc., with 113 Springville Road being identified as the primary address for this business. The city of West Point has never been notified of this business, the business license has never been applied for. All of the social media posts are requesting funding and keeping supporters and donors updated on the progress of the boarding facility for Brotherhood Life Mission, and the Brotherhood Life Mission House under construction, the same name as the business at that property. Photographs of that ongoing construction posted on social media are absolutely disproper. We have photos taken by building officials that absolutely match the photos that are taken and posted on social media, asking for contributions to the boarding house. All of those are clear violations of the zoning of this property. They're contrary to the original permit issued for this structure. The city has revoked the permit and has no intention to issue a new permit. And I'm not sure there's been any other further communication from the property owner that I know of than about two weeks ago. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's where it stands. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and city manager and Mr. Dutton maybe have an answer some as well.
Okay, before you do, let me just, I'll open questions in just a second. Let us go out of order here now, we've heard the first agenda on our work session. We normally get your public comment first, and we're going to take that now, after they have their, we're going to finish up here and get to questions, that's going to help you too, as we ask our questions. And when you get to get up here, you can make comment, but you're not going to be asking questions to the attorney or to the council. If they want to take this up again afterwards, you can make a motion, and we'll do so if we don't get questions answered.
You're going to entertain council questions?
I'm going to entertain council questions only. We're going to let you do that now, so they can hear some things from us. And that may, like you said, that may answer some questions. I'm just wanting to give some instruction that it's your job now, counsel, to get the questions that's running through their minds, ask.
Mayor, the only thing I would add to what I just said?
Yes.
Is the permit has been revoked, there's a stop-work order on this project, there is no new application, and right now, this project cannot move forward, and there's no action for the city council to take.
All right, now go ahead.
Is there any application for this business that's...
Not with the city, no. All they have done is form a nonprofit corporation with the Secretary of State and identify 113 Springville Road as the primary address for this business. There's been nothing filed with the city for an application for a license, business license, or the intent to operate a business at that address, which would be a violation of the zoning restrictions at that address. Been nothing filed with the city.
Can the city require them to take down the work that they've already completed beyond what they requested in the start?
Probably. I, you know, we haven't gotten that far. I would think we could consider that, and right now, there's simply a stop-work order, and current construction is not in compliance with the original permit. Whether or not they will be required to tear down, or take down, or any portion of that, we'll determine.
Would the city be responsible for that?
I think at this time, if that was the case, we would have to consider these plans being submitted, which would be a step forward in completing construction. So, as Mr. Dixon said, the work has been stopped on the project. It's really now in the property owner's court to make the next move as to what they would like to do. There's certainly an appeal process to take a go-through. But for us to move forward taking any other action on the project would require some action with the city. We're not sure that that's the right path.
If they are required to take some of it down, would that be an expense that the city would have? No?
No.
It would be, the owners would be responsible for everything?
Yes, there'd be some process in order to get to that.
Mr. Mayor, for all of our benefit, could we have an explanation of what low-density, single-family residence means?
I think it's required, what is it, four, no more than four?
Based on the definition of a, and we have to go by fair housing, the definition that our municipal planning board put in there, and it's the same thing throughout the state of Georgia, is that you can live in a single-family residential dwelling either as a family, as a, to allow for foster children, adopted, anything of that nature. But we do limit that you to define as a family, no more than four to live in the home as a single housekeeping unit. So in other words, they would be limited to four if they were unrelated.
Well, somebody would be related.
Okay, that's correct. Now, if you're related, you're not limited on that, but unrelated, that's how it's defined. Bam.
Anybody else?
I don't have a question to ask, but I would say thank you to city staff for acting quickly. This was, this is how it's supposed to work. When a problem arises, city staff responds to that problem and with our backing. So thank you to the city staff for being very responsive to the citizens.
And also to the citizens for being responsible for your neighborhood.
Right.
So, council, anybody else? All right, well, then, what we'll do now is, we're going to jump back in order now, we're going to go into the public comment. So who would like to go first? Okay, just come up and state your name.
Good afternoon, my name is Josh Dunn. I'm a former flight medic and firefighter out of Columbus, Georgia. I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force, a husband, father, and a concerned citizen of this community. I was asked to speak on behalf of some of the community concerning the structure taking place at 113. In a small town as ours, rumors spread like wildfire. I don't deal in rumors, I deal in facts, and the facts are, much like you stated, per the reference material provided earlier, and if you scan the QR code that's available, you can see the reference material I'm referencing. As shown on page one, the area is zoned as R1A, single-family low-density, per the zoning map. This structure does go up, if it is applied again and appealed and completed, it's going to still be outside the scope of the residential zone low-density. The listing, it lists the construction as for the Brotherhood of Life Mission Incorporated as a domestic nonprofit corporation, per page three, but their 501(c) status is still pending per their last update. While churches are allowed per zoning regulations currently, it does not allow for psychiatric treatment facilities. Per his own GoFundMe page, see page four, Mr. Mills is building in addition to his home that is meant to support men with PTSD by providing, and I quote, "temporary housing, suicide prevention, and intervention", among other things, which currently has his account over $3,800. This home is set to become their mission house, sporting up to eight bedrooms set aside for individuals seeing his care. And again, this does not, currently, there's a stop workage and there is a revocation of the permit. That being said, the current upstairs is, as if there is any more construction done, if it is completed, it could very well still function as that if he flies below board. So it's something that we all, as a citizenry, are concerned about. Lastly, it's concerned neighbors, we're worried about the potential effects of having such a concentration of men being treated for PTSD, a known psychological disorder, in a small residential area. And these are from his words, not ours. The additional traffic is one concern, it is a small street. If you've ever been on Springville, you know, you kind of got to get over a little bit just to let people pass. It's small, we have kids there. I think the biggest concern for everyone is that the place is going to be an unlicensed, a place of unlicensed treatment for men with mental disorders. And again, being a military vet, I get it, but this is not the place for it. They deserve a treatment, they deserve treatment in an accredited facility with staff and space to deal with the issues that said treatment could bring about. Otherwise, if the GoFundMe is any indication, there will be up to eight men with PTSD and other traumas living and being treated unlicensed within close proximity of our homes and children. Now, we are an inclusive community, we're not heartless, we understand that people need help, and there have been, on social media, plenty of folks to say that if it were in a different area, we would reach out, we would help, we would donate time, we would volunteer, but that's not the case. We must be concerned with the potential effects of having this type of facility in our small neighborhood. Now, we have on the petition that is before you, over 80 signatures from the fine voters of this community, and we're asking that the council consider the petition to limit the project to the original plans. Obviously, we're past that point with the revocation, but we're asking the council to limit the occupancy to the four non-blood-related members and keep it at that limit, and to consider the effects the proposed facility might have on our neighborhood. I greatly appreciate your time and consideration on this. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Do you have anyone else that would like to speak on this subject?
He was kind of our designated speaker.
He was your designated speaker, okay, well, that's good.
We felt like that would be a little bit simpler.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Sir, do you want to ask if you can push out lands, who in the audience supports your opinion on this?
I'm assuming that...
I was scared by it.
I know it's not safe to assume, but I assume that was the case here, so. All right, council, do you have any other questions after that, or are we going to move on to our next item? First of all, any more questions on the Springville issue before I move on to the next item?
Was there ever any production of any credentials from the homeowner, credentials that would indicate that he was certified to do things like that?
No, the only application I'm aware of with the city, and Mr. Dutton can correct me if I'm wrong, is the original building permit application for the two-story structure, and then there was an amended application for the three-story structure, no.
But you didn't see the certification in the social media anywhere?
I'm not aware of, well, no, that wouldn't be bound anywhere.
Probably, I mean, it didn't present it.
I'm not aware of any application for a business license or any certification to operate any business, much less a treatment facility of any kind. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. The only documentation submitted to the city with respect to the original building permit and the revised application.
Anybody else on Springville? Come up, state your name.
Hi, I'm Lyda Metters, and I live at 110 Terrace, directly behind 113 Springville. And my only concerns are, I would like to see some action from the board to maybe set up some sort of timeline for Mr. Mills to maybe get rid of this third story and make his property presentable so that, I mean, I'm concerned about real estate values in the neighborhood and around my home, and if I were someone, I wouldn't want to move in to that area just from the looks of it. So that's one thing that I'm concerned about, but I was just wondering if you all can set up some sort of timeline for this, for some action, for something to take place.
Thank you very much.
My name is Darian Kelly, I live on 124 Tyler Terrace, West Point, Georgia. How often did this property get inspected during its construction phase? Where is the note that he was building outside the permitted property? Number two, when was and how was y'all made aware of this? I think it was due to the public bringing this to your attention, forcing y'all to do the due diligence that we see now. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? I'll see, I'll hear one more if there is, if not, we're going to, we're going to move on. And I will say, in a construction project like that, once it's permitted and the footers are inspected, the building and code officials won't see that house again until it's completely framed and most of the trades are in before they come back again on another inspection. So it's easy for a project to get out of hand before they're back again on something like that. So, you know, y'all have made us aware of that as well. So we're going to go on, we got other business items to attend to, and I'm going to pause for just a minute. You're welcome to stay and watch the sausage being made, but I'll give anybody an opportunity, if they want to slip out, to do so for about 30, 40 seconds, and we'd love for you to stay. I'm not running you off, I'm just giving you an out that...
Some of us said that this was their first time attending a council meeting, so you might want to stay.
No, don't everybody, don't everybody leave. Oh, she's here, but she's leaving. Margaret, even, you're leaving?
I'm telling.
I say the same thing.
That was the first time in lockdown we heard a woman.
That's okay, I like it.
I'm staying, I like it on this side. Let me see what else you want to do.
Listen, it's up to y'all.
Is your camera still on? There's a question up there. Is your camera still on?
Yes, their camera never stops.
It never stopped.
The camera never stops, don't you know that? Okay, look, y'all, we're ready to get going now. City manager update, Ed, please give us an update.
Okay. Wish that some of the people would have stayed. I wanted to start off with garbage and recycle, and I'm ready to leave that.
Oh, they'll come back in for that.
We continue to have collection issues. We continue to have collection issues, everybody's aware of it. We continue as staff to engage with Am Waste on a daily basis. I can assure you to, you know, to offer a better level of service. We're working on some options, and I'm hoping by the next council meeting, we can talk about some ideas about moving forward with Am Waste and changing some things on the city side. Just so everybody's aware, we're at the twelve-month mark before the contract ends. We'll have to give a ninety-day notice, so probably March of next year, if that's something that we can't get resolved, that's about the timeline, so we've got plenty of time to work through a few things. We want to let the citizens know to contact Am Waste if they have a problem collection. Their number is 1-888-449-6277, or you email them at customercare@amwasteusa.com. You can also call City Hall, and we will take your information and we'll send that on to Am Waste. That's the only real way that we have to address the issues, the same way that the citizens do, but we are more than happy to do that, and again, we are, we're doing that on a daily basis, so we won't resolve this as much as anyone else does. On a, on a better note, on the staffing side, we are, we are recovering from the COVID slowdown and the lack of employment. Our police department and fire department are probably at the highest level of staffing since 2019 right now, so, fire department is fully staffed or was earlier today, and the police department, I think, maybe only has one opening right now, so that's outstanding, and I think that goes, it's just for the chiefs and HR that they've been working really hard to get our, to get us filled up. We do have some openings, and it's a, it's always a cycle with employees, but we do encourage anyone that's interested in the job, keep it on our website, and that's the best place to look for our job openings, or certainly call City Hall if you will. We have closed the economic development director advertisement. We have two qualified candidates, and we're scheduling interviews right now of those candidates. Hopefully, by the late July or the August meeting, I'll have a recommendation if one of these candidates work out to be, to be our new economic development director, so we're hopeful of that. On city projects, the intersection project at M.O.K. and Tenth Street is finally under construction after five years of work to get it there. You know, it's just sidewalk improvements, signalization, and landscaping, new crosswalks, so it's really gonna be a nice improvement to the gateway coming into the city. That should be complete by mid-August. We still are just having unprecedented numbers of contacts from economic development, retail, commercial, residential, industrial, across the board. It's, it's an everyday, Dennis, sitting those as well, and we're getting some good news just about every day from somebody who wants to come here and build, so we just gotta get them across the finish line now, and hopes for, hopes for the economy will allow us to do that, so. Just maybe that's all my...
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions regarding the report?
I have no questions, but I noticed the sidewalk, the new one on Tenth Street, they had torn out part of it, was there an issue with that?
Yeah, well, you know, DOT put the new sidewalk, those new crosswalks in, basically, is what they did. They came in and made everything ABA compliant. When they came in and started working on the project, we contacted them and said, "Hey, we got this project that y'all have finally approved for us", which is state-approved plans for our project, but they said, "Doesn't matter, it's already in the contract, we're going to make it approved". So the state wasted their money, our money, to do those improvements, and now we gotta tear those out in order to realign those with the new crosswalks, so. Hate that that happened, but there was nothing that we could do to prevent it.
Hey, do we have any idea of how much longer the project on eighteen, not Russian?
End of next year is their schedule. The, although you mentioned that, though, it's my understanding that they expect completion of the two lanes of the new bridge to be open by September, and they'll then shift traffic over to the new lane and tear the other bridge out, so the bridge project's moving along quickly.
One more question to add, do you know what's going on with the construction on Sunset Arrowhead? At the end, very end of Sunset?
It's a residential lot. Dennis, do you have any other thing on that?
I have not heard from the guy.
Are they actually working over there?
No, nothing.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's starting to look really bad with tree stumps, and it's growing, actually growing back up.
Right. I think they just started the project and then stopped, so.
They have, they have, there is a permit in place on it, but it's kind of just a stop commercial, nobody's putting a stop on it or anything, it's...
We just got through our family vacation in Florida last week, and the trash pickup was three days late, later than they had advertised it, and the people were apologizing, and I said, "Don't worry, I'm familiar with the project".
Tink tale on that. Let me say that, that we have an incredibly responsive city staff, and when people reach out to me, and I have a reason to reach out to Ed, Ed acts, I don't, I don't see what some people see with a non-responsive staff. And so I thank you, and I thank the staff for being responsive to me, and I think to others, when we reach out to you. When we're made aware of something, and we make you aware of something, things happen, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, that's, that's all on staff, all I am is a kind of a, and then we get it done, so they...
You did it, you did it.
They're the ones that deserve the thanks, I appreciate it, we got, we got some great people.
And not just to the camera, but I wish everybody could say to hear that we are working on Am Waste, and I know personally, because I've talked to you multiple times, and so has everybody here, and so I, we're gonna get that fixed, and you've got our support, you've got my support, whatever takes to get it fixed, we're behind you, thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the meeting minutes, and we've had a request by a council member to change the way we take the minutes and go to a more verbatim style other than what we currently do. So, Ed, why don't you explain how we do, what we do, and we'll then open it up for discussion?
Right, and we review, for various reasons, minutes of council meetings, you know, from fifty years ago sometimes, on a question that we may have about an item. And the city has really been keeping the same style of minutes for decades that we do now, which is a summary-type minutes of the action items that are occurring. We always keep what the state requires as far as the motion, second, you know, who voted, who was at the meeting, those type of things. So, just because we're always done that way, and then we have to continue to do it that way, it seems to be effective. We, as far as I know, we have no unresolved issues that's ever occurred with our minutes for a request for information. So I think what we've been done, what we've been doing, it has been working, and working fine. I think there's only really three options. One, we can continue to do it the way we're doing it. Two, we could limit it to just what the state law requires, which many cities do. Or three, we could do verbatim minutes, which would require us to have a stenographer come in and keep every word of the minutes, because we don't have anybody on staff that could do that, or, you know, that'd just be something we'd have to hire out to have done. In my mind, that's really the only, you could do some other hybrid, I guess, but really that's the three options that we have. Again, we just wanna, we talked about it in the last meeting, I wanna make sure that we put that on the agenda and had some conversation about it.
We really haven't had any problems with the way we've been doing it, as far as I can see. I mean, I'm not speaking for any other council member, but it would cost the city to have to hire a person to come to the meetings to take the minutes, wouldn't it? And I think Richard does a fabulous job at what he's doing.
Here, here.
I mean, this keeps coming up, and I remember in the past, I did my own research, and I, I know that's your job, but, and basically, every city is doing it the same way we do this, so. And then, it's always recorded, so you can always go back, and besides that, if, I mean, what is it? So you remember what you said? I can pretty much tell you what I said, so, I, I mean, I don't see the problem. I don't see the issue of why it has to be word for word, and that's just me.
I don't think you can get much more transparent than video cameras running, and every word we say is being broadcast, and so I don't see a need for a stenographer, or I think what we're doing is just fine.
And if I start forgetting what I've said, I'll record it myself.
We'll remind you of what you said.
I know, I know.
Well, Evan, when we've had issues years in the past, Ed's brought up the minutes, and we've been able to solve it every time. It's happened several times, and Ed's brought up the minutes, and it's very clear who said what and what was decided, so, I mean, I don't see any problem with what we're doing now, so.
I agree, I thought Richard does a really good job of laboring over the summary of the discussion that the council has, and getting, and that's pretty much what the GMA guidelines state, is that you, if someone goes back and reads it, they can get the understanding of what the discussion was about, and that's, that's what you're trying to capture.
We don't wanna try to have something like the Congressional Record where they put a whole speech in there that never got given just so they could say that they did it to their constituents. I mean, we don't need all that, we just need what, what we did.
I'm gonna bring this up at the end, y'all, because I do want this voted on, because we've taken this up a few times, and I'd like to, I'd like to put it to rest, so Ed has given us three options here, which is leave it as is, lower it down to just the state minimum, or do the verbatim, so. You know, this needs to go to the next business meet, excuse me, the next business meeting to be voted on, and your desire is?
My desire is to leave it as is.
Did anybody say anything different?
I don't see any need for voting.
And, I mean, and Richard is still...
Somebody's gonna have to make a motion.
Richard is still so accurate, let me just say that. If he, I mean, he's, he's very detailed, and if he thinks that he missed something, there's been times when he called and said, "Send me this" or "Send me that", so, so.
And that's just on presenters, if you have it.
Right, right, and so, he might not get the, I mean, the exact information, but he's gonna go back and make sure he, he gets it.
Right.
I'm willing to make a motion to leave as is.
Well, we'll do that in the business meeting, but that's, that's where I wanted to just hear you guys and see what your thoughts were on that, because I'll be asking for a motion. All right, hearing nothing else on that, I'm gonna move on to the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority member, or members, I believe, actually.
Right, and I think most of you all have been in council while we were active in the Joint Development Authority previously. It's still a legal entity, they, they've really just dropped the activity, but they are wanting to move forward that. I think, I think Megan is now in charge of that as part of her charge with the Clums, it's Predator, Predator Valley Area Committee, or that's our chamber, anyway, the Clums Chamber. And so she has asked that the council appoint two members to serve on the Valley Partnership Authority Board. In the past, the council had set it up where the chairman of the West Point Development Authority and the economic development staff person would be those two members. That way you wouldn't, you wouldn't be reappointing, you just made those appointments for those two positions. That, I think that works, I think the evidence in the past of the people that served on that board, it worked very well, we had several of our Development Authority members, and I think Megan even was chairperson at one time of the Joint Development Authority, which stands very well for West Point. So, our recommendation is that the council approve those two positions, whoever is in those, right now that'd be Kevin Patrick and Corvett and Megan, Economic Development Director, but whoever would be in those two positions would be one that could serve as the, as the manager.
Okay, any questions regarding that? All right, the next is the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the West Point Housing Authority for the West Point Villages Project. Alex, would you elaborate on that for us, please?
I can, the, what is before the council is an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. This is between the city of West Point and the housing authority of the city of West Point. This is for the development at West Point Village, and this is a contract to provide for the funding by the city of the $250,000 that was previously approved, and this is an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the funding, the payment and funding use of that property for the West Point Village project.
Okay, any questions?
When are they gonna start working on this project?
They are, they are looking to close all the financial pieces of this on July the fifteenth. Contractor is, I want to say, they're standing ready to move forward, so I would say probably August, maybe August, maybe a month before they actually start the construction.
And this is tied to by the Coca-Cola?
Yes, it's the seventy-two units, Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, no other things. I do need a motion, we're gonna go into an executive session now to discuss property. We may or may not have some action this evening, I don't know. Once we have this meeting, we'll come back in and we'll close out this work session. This will remain open until we get back. Y'all are welcome to stay if you want to, can't tell you how long it'll be, and I do need that motion to enter the executive session.
The loop.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you post?
Thanks, Gaida.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you all.